Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:45 PM. And I will be calling to order the Balconies Heights Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors meeting. We do have a quorum. First item of business, citizens to be heard. Ms. Delia, did anyone sign up?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. First item of business is a presentation of plaques for outgoing council members. The first presentation, the plaque will be presented to Mayor Suzanne DeLeon in appreciation for sixteen years of exemplary and dedicated service to the community and staff who live and work in the city of Balconies Heights. Mayor of the city of Balconies Heights from May 2008 to May 2024. Suzanne, congratulations.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Ms. Cantu, my friend Gloria. Presented to Gloria J. Cantu in recognition of your service, hard work, and leadership in the community as council member place two for the city of Balconies Heights, May 2019 to May 2024. Thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate you.
Chair, may I say something, please? I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to thank Mayor Suzanne DeLeon for your service and Councilman Gloria Cantu and Stephen Lada for their service, and I really appreciate you all taking time from your personal lives to volunteer your services to the city. And I just want to let you know that your service is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
And I'd also like to echo Mr. Valverde's comments. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, for your efforts, for everything you've done to helping us move the city in the direction that we're going to. We've made some great strides. We've hit some bumps in the road, but it's been a pleasure working with you and just the wisdom you brought to the table has been magnificent. Thank you. Ms. Cantu, same for you. Thank you for your leadership, for your guidance, for helping me learn how this system works, both of you. Truly, truly appreciate it, and thank you so much for your service, for what you've done for the city. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thank you for the recognition. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes for April 29, 2024 meeting. You have a copy in your packet as everyone read them. If so, I will call for a motion, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, board will review and approve, disapprove applications for program project funding to develop the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year district budget and plan. Mr. Messick?
Ma'am, thank you. Well, last month, the board issued a call for projects with a May 17 deadline. That deadline has come and passed, and there were no inputs. Therefore, tonight, I will present my request for project funding for the FY 25 Balconies Heights Crime Control and Prevention District. You have three attachments. The first page is primarily what we're looking at here tonight, and that is the funding request. We have two items, just like last year. The first one would be for Justice Center operation and maintenance expenses. And the second one, the most costly, would be for personnel costs. For the first one, $157,000 to fund utilities and facility maintenance costs for the Justice Center required for paying utilities and Justice Center repairs and upkeep. For personnel costs, nearly $881,000, and that's going to fund eight police positions, just like we're doing this year. Nothing has changed there either, and that will be two sergeants, positions, two corporals, and four police officers. Built into this, as we do with all budgets, when it comes to salaries, there's usually anticipated costs for workers' comp, TMRS, steps, and all of that. This budget does also propose a 3.3% cost of living adjustment to base salaries. As you know, in accordance with a collective bargaining agreement, we're obligated to pay what Social Security puts down in November of each year. Of course, we don't know what it's going to be in November. Right now, it's 3.3, and of course, that COLA is capped at 5%. So overall, we're requesting $1,038,000 in expenses for the Crime Control and Prevention District. So on page two, you also have a copy of a budget, even though we're not voting on the budget tonight, we're just voting to accept the request, but this is the budget that you will see when we come back next month in June. This is the budget that we will debate. You can see the budget is balanced, and you can see the account lines there. So just a preview, a heads up of what's coming next month, if you want to get an early start looking at that. The last thing is the budget calendar. Of course, tonight, we're just approving the request for funding, and then we're going to issue a public hearing to come back again next month, where we'll take a look at the budget. Once that budget's passed, it goes to council, and then council will have a public hearing in July, and then they'll vote on the budget. It'll become a part of the city's regular budget, subject to modification and changes, which it always does. The regular city budget will be passed in September, along with a new crime control budget, and we'll come back here again in October to make it look like the one that was passed by the city. And so that's the overall big picture. You have the numbers. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Any questions, comments for Mr. Messick? As he mentioned, on this funding request, we do have the descriptions and the justifications for such numbers, so. Mr. Messick, thank you. If there are no questions for Mr. Messick, I will call for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll now call for the vote. Mr. Lada? I'm sorry? Ms. DeLeon?
Yay.
Mr. Juan? Mr. Sines?
Yeah.
Mr. Valverde?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item of business, the board will schedule a public hearing on June 24, 2024 on the district's 2024-2025 proposed budget. And you'd also have the budget calendar in your packet. And I believe that is the last order of business on the agenda.
Right, right.
Madam Chair, would you like to have the mayor recognize Stephen?
Yes, ma'am, I would.
So we have a plaque for you presented to Stephen R. Lada in recognition of your service, your hard work, and leadership in the community as council member place one for the city of Balconies Heights from May 2016 to May 2024. Thank you for everything you've done for our city. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. She wants to take a picture of us.
I believe that does bleed, but uh. That does conclude this evening's meeting of our Crime Control District. I will now adjourn the meeting at 5:54 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for taking the time to come over here and be with us at this meeting. It is a regular city council meeting for the city of Balconies Heights. It is Monday, May 20, and 6:00 PM, we do have a quorum, so we may conduct business. So at this time, would you please silence all your phones, electronic devices? Appreciate that. Ms. Lysa, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Please be seated. We're going to go to business item number one, and then we'll go back to the oath of office. This is item number one, consideration and action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the joint general election held in Balconies Heights, Texas on Saturday, May 4, 2024, for election of mayor, council place one, and council place two. I will look to you, council, for action on this.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Lada, yea or nay?
Yea.
Ms. Cantu?
Yea.
Ms. Lysa?
Yea.
Mr. Sines?
Yea.
Ms. Valverde?
Yea.
Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. And go back to the oath of office for Mayor Johnny Rodriguez and Council Place One, Jack Burton, Council Place Two, David Sellers. Delia, are you going to do the swearing in?
Let me do that first. Marilette Johnny Rodriguez.
This is your certificate of election.
Okay.
And we're going to do the oath of office. If you could just raise your right hand in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Johnny A. Rodriguez Jr.
I, Johnny A. Rodriguez Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor for the city of Balconies Heights.
Of the office of mayor for the city of Balconies Heights.
In the state of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
With your, excuse me, with your permission, I'd like to say a few words before you swear in the other two. I have served Balconies Heights for twenty years. Actually, twenty-one. I was on planning and zoning, and then four years on city council, and sixteen years as your mayor. And I can honestly say it was my pleasure to serve this city. I served this community, several governmental boards, my peers, as well as Balconies Heights entire staff, the past staff and the current, with respect and dignity that you all deserve. We have the best staff, and I am thankful and grateful to you all. And to the Balconies Heights staff, I'm proud of all of our accomplishments, and they could not have been accomplished without all of your help. And I thank you all for your vision and your goals to make Balconies Heights the best city it can be. My heartfelt thank you to Councilman Valverde, Sines, Lysa, Lada, as well as Councilwoman Cantu. We were a great team and got a lot done because of your professionalism and desire to make good decisions for the residents. I wish this new council the very best. I ask that God bless and protect the city of Balconies Heights. Bless and protect our residents, and bless and protect our city staff. My life is full and joyful, and I am so thankful for the opportunities that I have experienced being your mayor. Thank you very much. You can swear them in now.
You doing Jack Burton first, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Hey, Mr. Jack Burton. On the left. Congratulations. I, as the new mayor of Balconies Heights, am going to be administering the oath of office. So, in the name and by authority of the state of Texas. Repeat after me. I, Jack Burton.
I, Jack Burton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute duties of the office of council.
That I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties of the office of council.
The office of city council.
Place one.
Place one.
For the city of Balconies Heights.
For the city of Balconies Heights.
In the state of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. I stumbled through, so I think you got it. And I think this is, you'll need to sign that right there. Delia, I have my pen. Okay, so next will be Councilman-elect David Sellers. Council Place Two. Sellers, congratulations on our election to office. Thank you. I will be administering, again, in the oath of office to you in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas. Repeat after me. I, David Sellers.
David Sellers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of council, place two.
The office of council, place two.
For the city of Balconies Heights.
For the city of Balconies Heights.
In the state of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
And of the city of Balconies Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You sign right here. I sign there? Oh, and I need to sign Jack's, correct?
We didn't get to say anything. Okay, thank you.
Here we go? Well, yes. This one here?
The middle one, yeah.
All right. We're going to get adjusted with this.
It's working.
It's working? Okay, great. Thank you. So, thank you all for being here very much for this momentous occasion. I want to read something very quickly before we get started at the meeting, since we have the opportunity of everyone here to convey this message for everyone. I want to say to the citizens of Balconies Heights, it is with profound gratitude and humility that I address you today. Having been entrusted with the honor of serving as your mayor for the second time, reflecting on the journey that began in 1989, when you honored me as a young councilman, and later in 2000, when we made history with my election as the city's first Hispanic mayor, fills me with immense pride. Together, we have traversed two decades of challenges and triumphs, and I'm committed to continuing this journey with the unwavering determination and humility. Your steadfast support throughout this election has been truly inspiring. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to continue serving each and every one of you. As we embark on this journey together, to address the pressing issues facing our beloved city, I pledge to lead with wisdom, resilience, and foresight. We cannot ignore the financial challenges that threaten our city's stability and cash reserves. The lack of anticipated financial benefits from our partnership and investment into the Wonderland of America's mall raise serious concerns about our past decision-making processes and accountability. Moreover, our high property taxes and the potential unsustainability of payroll costs associated with police collective bargaining agreement demand our immediate attention. In the face of these challenges, I refuse to remain silent. We deserve essential amenities, safe neighborhoods, and core delivery services. However, achieving these goals requires fiscal responsibility with the council and staff tightening the belt and making tough decisions to bring our budget under control. I urge our new and previous city council members to join me in confronting these financial hurdles together. Transparency, fairness, accountability, and fiscal responsibility will guide our decision-making process as we navigate these turbulent waters together. Despite the challenges ahead, I am reminded of the resilience and the strength that define our city. Together, we will overcome obstacles, seize opportunities, and build a stronger, more prosperous community for generations to come. Thank you for your continued trust and support, and I'm honored to serve as your mayor once again, and I'm eager to embark on this journey alongside you. Also, I would like to take this time to thank the mayor for her service as well. It is a hard job. It's tough, and sometimes you make good decisions, and sometimes you make bad decisions. But overall, the mayor contributed her time and her effort in the sixteen years that she was here. Regardless of the circumstances of how she served or when she served, she deserves recognition for those years of tremendous donated time that she did from her family and her affairs in her personal life. So again, Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you, and thank you very much, and I wish you well in everything you do from this point on. God bless you, and God speed. So real quickly, I'll just finish with, first of all, I cannot have done this, and I would not have been able to do this, without God, the Holy Spirit and Jesus Christ, which I would like to commend and say, that is what drives me, the Holy Spirit, Jesus Christ, and God. And I want to commend Him, and I want to thank Him for everyone here, including the ones that have already served. I would like to also recognize my sister Margaret, her son Robert Lockamy, who helped in Yolanda, and Dan, my cousin that's here. We have Billy and Marie McWilliams, Roger G., we have Mr. Guevara here, Lily Cruz, and all the members of the recount team, if they're here or not. I'd like to say thank you very much for your time. Tracy Ebersol, who's here also as well, Mr. Howard Uwaka, Joey Vince, Jack Burton, Councilman Charlie White, I don't know if he's here or not, but he was involved in helping in the recount as well, and his family. David Sellers, Kathy and his wife, George and Linda Monsiv, and his wife as well, Lydia and Guillermo, Mike Guerrero, Molly and Neighbor, the neighbors all in Bobby Lane. Ms. Delia Sanchez, I want to say thank you during this turbulent time that we were trying to get the election through. You helped us, and you were fair with everyone to try and get everybody situated. So thank you very much for your service as a city secretary in doing that. If I've missed anybody, please, my family, I would like to thank. My wife Lisa, would you please stand? You put up with me all the time through the campaign. My son, Joey Jose Miguel, Johnny, my son, please stand up, and my daughter Annie. Both. My dear friend Joe and Jerry Byers and his wife, Beth, his fiancee, too, and the be-wife, everyone here, thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything. And with that, we'll conclude and move forward to our business. Mr. Herbert, thank you. Okay, so then, let's move on. Let me get my packets. We'll go on to the next item of the business. It should be short work of what we're going to do. There's nothing major that we're going to be passing today, so we are now on item. Just so you can remind me where we are. Okay, so do we have any public comments from the general public today? Yes, Delia? No public comment? Okay. So we'll now move on to the consent agenda items. We're going to, on item A, the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 29, 2024. Shall we start with that one first or move down? It's both. And the other one will be finance report. B, finance report for the month of April 2024. Bear with me, it's been twenty-four years since I've sat behind this chair. Yes. Okay, do we have any questions on the consent agenda items, A and B? Approval of minutes for regular meeting of April 29, 2024, and B, finance report for the month of April 2024. No? Okay. What's that? Okay, so if there's no discussion, let me ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilman Lysa. Okay, motion by Councilman Lysia. I'm sorry, who made the original motion? Mr. So, Science is the first and Mr. Valverde is second? Okay. Councilman Lysia first, and Councilman Valverde is second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, do we have a unanimous vote, all five? Okay, motion, yes.
It's in the middle, the middle.
We're getting adjusted, Jack. It's okay. We're all getting adjusted. Yeah.
So, it's a choice, so you can do a roll call.
Okay, what was done in the past? Did you have a roll call? Would you prefer a roll call? Okay, let's do a roll call. So, starting with you, Jack, yea or nay? All right, okay. Councilman Sellers? Councilman Lysia? Councilman Valverde? Okay, and then Councilman, Science, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yay? Forgive me, Mr. Science. And then, so that is a complete motion passes for unanimous vote. Okay. The next item on the agenda is business items. We'll be moving into item number one. Oh, we already did item number one, that's right, cuz we canvassed. So, to consider an action to appoint a mayor pro temp. So, this is an item that generally takes place after an election where a mayor pro temp gets elected to serve in the event the mayor cannot or is incapacitated to serve. So, do we have a person that, I think it's Councilman Science is next up? Okay, Jack, would you like to make? Okay, so you move to as Science is the next mayor pro temp, okay? Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, we'll call it. Jack? Okay, and then Councilman Sellers? Okay, Councilman Lysia? Okay, Councilman Science? Councilman Valverde? All right, motion carries unanimously passed? Okay. All right, we will move to item number three. The city council will hold a public hearing to receive public comments on a special use permit, SUP, request submitted by property owner for the property located at 2926 Hillcrest Drive for use as a single-family residence. Administrator, if you may, who's gonna be out, Mr. Lotta will be? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you should see the presentation that we made to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And basically, the request for a special use permit per ordinance is allowed. The property in question is 2926 Hillcrest Drive. You'll see on the presentation, the official no man claim share of that property. The main thing to remember is that it's currently zoned 01 low-rise office, and that zoning will not change. The special use permit is something that is allowed in our matrix, use matrix, and however, it requires a planning and zoning recommendation, and then council approval. So, it will still retain its 01 low-rise office zoning. What they're asking for is for the special use permit is for them to be allowed to do a single-family residence use, and the current zoning around there, there is other residential in that area, butts up to a single-family residence. There's multifamily up and down Hillcrest, and of course, there's also a low-rise office still there. So, as I mentioned, the zoning request is for that special use permit for single-family residence. Things to consider, we could not find anything in the previous this property that it was, nothing other than single-family residence. So, there is no non-residential use associated with this property. The requestor has stated that they will probably rent this property to individuals in the medical center, and because they have indicated to do that, they have been informed and given a copy of our rental registration program, which they will have to do. The financial impact for the city will be that we'll gain a hundred dollars every year should, once they enroll their property. We also get to inspect it prior to it gets occupied, and then every time that it gets a new residence, person to rent it. So, our recommendation and the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is that the approval of this special use permit for 2926 Hillcrest Drive to allow a single-family residence use.
Okay, great. The time is 5:31. Excuse me, I can't see that. 5:26 PM. I mean, 6:26 PM. I can't see that from here. 6:26 PM, and I'm gonna call for open discussion, for public discussion on this.
We don't know that yet until he fills out the rental registration program form. That's part of the rental registration program. He's there. They tell us how many people will be living there.
Smart move. So, we have no comments from the public regarding that particular item. Being no comments. The time is 6:26 PM. We're gonna close the public comment on the item to be discussed, and there'd be no action on the council to be taking on this right now. Now, we will move now to item number four. The city council will take action on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation regarding the SUP request submitted by Sandra McLean for the property located at 2926 Hillcrest Drive to use as a single-family residence. Mr. Albert Lotta, again, will provide the input, and this is where you can talk, David, on it.
Oh, Mr. Sellers, basically, they'll be governed by what our current rental registration program allows. So, like, we currently have twenty-two properties that are single-family residents that are renting. So, whatever that program allows them to have in there is what they'll be allowed. And if they violate that, obviously. Right, that, right. I'd have to get back with you on exactly what the rental registration program says regarding single-family, how many people can live there, but obviously, they can't exceed the capacity of the home. I mean, we're gonna, part of the, again, the form requires them, tell us, plus, we're gonna go visit it, how many bedrooms are in there, and so therefore, we can determine how many people they say are going to be living there, and we make sure that they're in compliance with the rental registration program, and that includes single-family homes. That is in the rental registration program, in our ordinance. It's all together, even including multifamily.
Any other comments? Councilman Burton?
Correct. Correct, sir. We cannot find anything, and the individual payment, the planning and zoning, it's always been a rental house. And it still retains all the characteristics of a rent, of a home, of a single-family home. There's nothing there that would imply that it's ever been a business, and the city has no record of there ever being a business there. No, cuz they plan on using that house as a same configuration as it is. There is no, as far as they haven't told us they're gonna do any additional improvements to the home, but the home as is, is what we're being told is going to be rented out.
Any other questions? Councilman Valverde?
I am not a hundred percent sure when it became vacant, but I've been told that it has been vacant for a while.
Any other questions? Councilman?
It will last for as long as they want to have it, and they can withdraw their application at any time that they no longer wanna use it. However, they are, they have to be in compliance. So, if we find, like you mentioned, if they have twenty people living there, the city has a right to go back to the process and revoke the special use permit. So. And if it gets revoked, they have to wait one year before they can reapply.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's call for a vote on this. So, the council will take action on the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation regarding the SUP request. What is the council's pleasure? And who is, wanted to make a motion to take action? Councilman Lysia moves. And Mr. Burton? Councilman Burton seconds. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? And we'll call for a roll call vote. Jack Burton? Mr. Sellers? Mr. Lysia?
Yes.
Mr. Science?
Yeah.
Mr. Valverde? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Number five. Continued discussion on the city council's ability to regulate storage container homes. Mr. Frank Garz is not here, but he has his staff attorney that is gonna be answering any questions. Councilman Valverde, I think you had brought up the issue concerned. You wanna continue? Or, did you have it? Okay, go ahead, Councilman Science. Your main concern is the storage containers? Under the Lancaster issue? I think you mentioned something Lancaster? Okay, that's what I was asking. I'm sorry. Is that the, did you review the ordinance that he provided, or the sample ordinance? Were you satisfied with that? Okay. Okay, and that's the one you recommend to the rest of your colleagues? And anyone with their comments? Any other comments? Any other questions, Dave? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that motion? Yeah, it's just discussion, that's right. It's a discussion item only. So, we don't, we don't have to make a motion on anything. No, all it is is just a briefing, my mistake, yeah. So, you wanna, we don't need to make a motion to table it at all, okay? Until it comes vote for a vote. Right now, it's for a discussion. My own input on this is that I need more information. First of all, when you came up with the suggestion for the containers, Councilman Science, what was your theory behind that? What was the reasoning behind that? To add storage containers as a form of housing? And you were looking at it as just another way of adding another home type instruction into the community? Or what? Because I wasn't privy to the original discussion. Yeah, and I didn't get any background information on it, so.
The discussion is not to include storage containers.
Okay.
And that's, that's the discussion here, is to avoid us having to deal with people coming in and wanting to put storage containers.
Perfect, okay.
We don't want that. I think everybody wants the same thing. We don't want it.
Yeah.
And so, everybody's in agreement, we're just saying it differently.
Good.
So the idea is to prohibit the use of storage containers as single-family residents. That's where we're headed.
Okay.
And so this item will be to ask the city attorney to go back and formulate some ordinance that will, that will help us achieve that.
Fantastic, that's a better explanation. And unfortunately, we didn't have that information, background information, and enough time to really study the issue. So I'm glad to hear that. To commend you on that, Councilman Sines. You need to withdraw it? So then let's call for a vote for the motion to table? We need first second, correct. Okay, so we're calling for a second to his, to Councilman Sellers' motion? Do we have a second to his motion to table the item? I know, but we have to call for the vote. And that makes it a moot issue afterwards. Under, yeah, exactly. So, no one seconds, dies for lack of a second, so the motion dies. Okay? All right, we will move on to item number six. Do you want it? Okay, so then let's go ahead and take action. It's, it's, yeah. So it's under the purview of the council if you want to direct for further action on this. Right, so is it the council's wish that we direct him to move forward and get the information so we can make a decision on voting on it in the next meeting? Okay, Mr. Burton, yeah? Thank you, Councilman Sines. Just in case somebody comes in. That's the whole purpose. So then we'll go ahead and direct the attorney staff to gather the information necessary to bring to the next council meeting so we can decide to make a vote on it and adopt it. Okay? Okay, item number six. We're going to do the continued discussion regarding outside burning and ordinances to consider for adoption. Again, this will be on our attorney to provide his direction on that. I think this one was the one Councilman Valverde had brought to the table. I think, go ahead.
Anyway, there it is. It needs a little beating here. But, yeah, I think be a good idea for the, the rest of the council members just came on board, read this ordinance, and then bring it up next, next meeting. And at that next meeting, if our attorney is here, then I'll be asking him some questions about this ordinance. And maybe you all have some more questions too, once you read it. But, but the intention here was to stop outside burning, period. And according to this ordinance, it's not stopping it. And if we vote on this ordinance, it's just going to be another ordinance is going to sit there because there's a lot of responsibilities here that I don't know who's going to be taking care of this. I don't know who's going to be monitoring. For example, you can burn if there's, if there's wind no more than 15 miles an hour. Who's going to check that? You can burn dead animals to, to, to avoid disease. Well, according to, to the, the TC, TC?
TCEQ.
TCEQ, you can't burn carcasses. So it's a little confusing. So that's what I'm saying. I think it's better for you guys to read it, and then we'll talk about it again next month.
Again, this is just for discussion, so there'll be no vote taken on this right now. Councilman Burton?
I, I get the, what this ordinance is about. I think your, your main concerns would be plastics, vinyls, toxic kind of stuff. I still think you should be able to have a, a, you know, your patio chairs with your burn pit, you know, and be able to burn wood. I don't want to, I don't want to make light of this, but technically, you're barbecuing, and that's a dead carcass, you know?
Well, and that's why, I just brought it up, and that's why I left it up to council. You decide. This is, this is, this is the way.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and it does say here that you can burn wood and leaves and stuff, and it does say, that it does show the things you cannot burn, like treated wood, electrical insulation, things like that, because they create toxins.
Yes, that's, that's.
Yeah. But that's another thing now, and I know we can educate the resident by mail, social media, whatever, but who's going to be there watching, making sure they're not burning illegal stuff? And that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's why I'd like for you to read, read about this, think about it, and, and there's no big, no big problem right now. There's not too many people burning out, but there are some people burning out, and that was my concern for their neighbors.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I would also like the chief of fire department to be here to have his input on that. I know that if, if burning is allowed here, there's going to be a lot of people burning leaves, okay? And leaves create smoke. Smoke brings the fire department. So we need some input on this from the fire chief.
My question is, if I may, you finish, Mr. Valverde? Councilman Valverde, yeah? You finished?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
I'm sorry for my naive, being naive here, but who is our official fire marshal? Would that be chief?
He's in the fire department, still getting the fire department. And the fire chief has been working with Mr. Valverde to put this together.
So it would be the chief of the fire department?
Yeah.
As our official fire marshal.
And if I could ask, where is our fire chief today with this issue that was going to be brought up?
No, he, he, he wasn't going, he wasn't able to be here today, but he has been working for what reason did he say? He was on vacation.
Oh, okay, so he's on vacation, that's, yeah, excusable. Yeah, exactly. Threw everybody off. Well, one of the things, Councilman Valverde, that we heard out in the campaign trail with our, the people that are out there, is they want to avoid, and I'm fully cognizant and also aware of the concerns, and I think you have valid concerns, particularly on the plastics, the combustible materials, things that can cause irritants to people's lungs and breathing and things of that nature. But we have to be very careful not to go too much overboard because people are really feeling the effects of, of a homeowners association mentality city, and they're wanting to avoid that as much as possible. So I think that we will give it its due diligence. I think that you have a very valid concern. I support it. And I think that if, like you say, we study it, craft it to where it meets the expectations that you're looking at, and as well as the other members, then I think we'll have a hefty little ordinance that we can pass that will be fair and equitable to all.
Well, if I may, again, what I'm saying is, this is one of my concerns. I just wanted to put it out to council. Maybe they don't know what's going on. And, and I did say at the last council meeting, when I brought it up, says, I'll leave it up to you guys, think about it, and we can, we can do, make an ordinance to avoid it, or, and I did mention, there's no problem, no big problem, but I'm just kind of looking for the safety of the neighbors or the people that are burning.
I think it's good that you did that.
If it's no big deal, hey, well, just let it go. Because like I said, if we create an ordinance, it's just going to sit there, because I don't think it's really going to be enforced the way it's written.
We should talk about as to who will be the person that will be enforcing that.
And again, that's what I'm, I'm saying. Then you guys need to read this and think about it, and they think it's a bad idea, that's a bad idea. We'll forget about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'll be glad to, it sounds like this is going to be taken up at a subsequent meeting, and Frank can talk to you all more about that when he's here, but I, y'all, the city doesn't have any ordinance on this right now, so burning is banned. You can't do outdoor burning inside, say limits basically by default, by state law. So this would be to allow some burning, but subject to TCEQ rules, which limit a lot of things. They're very limited on what you can get away with burning, and how it needs to be done and all that. So just to clarify, the ordinance that's up for discussion or that we've been working on is, allows some limited safe outdoor burning.
I agree. I don't think we should restrict the citizens from having like a weenie roast, a marshmallow roast. People like doing that in a controlled environment. And I think just using common sense in approaching this ordinance would be most prudent. Great. Any other discussion? Okay, being that it was just a discussion item, there's no action to be taken, we'll move to item number seven. Department reports and Q and A, question and answer for the police department, fire department, community development and economic development, and public affairs department. So who would like to proceed first out of that department? We want to start with the police? Chief John Howard?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. So, mayor, I guess, let me clarify, if, on my end, I'm not seeing our report, but does everybody have the report? Before I ask if there's any questions? Did y'all get that? Because I can't find it on what I downloaded. It's 11 pages, it's a document that.
It's in the Dropbox. It came in late after I had already sent out the packets.
Okay, so y'all, y'all do have it? So I guess if y'all have any questions, there's nothing that I have that's updated besides our three new positions that we have that we're looking into, the officers that you'll probably see the new faces on the streets, but, but unless there's any questions I can answer from the packet.
Councilman Burton?
The new officers on the street, when were they hired?
They were actually hired, probably, we started the process, it's been probably within the last two weeks with the psych, everything that we have to go through, through T-CO, background checks. It's been probably within the last two weeks, yes, sir.
And there was three of them, or two of them?
Three. Well, more recent, as of, I want, well, two for sure. We had a third one that was floating around with this. We had a hard time from his city. They didn't want to release him. So the city has 10 days to respond to our shared request for his background. We recently got it Friday. So I just include all three because they were all together with us from the beginning. So officially, it was, it was three. I'm going to say three, yes, sir.
Budgeted positions?
Yes, sir. They were open positions.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Okay. Comment for police department. Chief, I want to commend the officers for their, their long hours that they've been doing lately. They've really stepped up to the plate in helping us out during the staff shortage. So please convey our appreciation to the officers and that we recognize their efforts that they put into protecting us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other? Any other comments? Personally, I feel, and I had discussed this with our city administrator before I was taken office, I had sent him a letter basically saying, and I want to make sure that it's conveyed, that this is not anti-police in any way whatsoever. This is more of a fiscal management of our budget. When we wanted to come in, we were coming in, I had seen that we were going to add officers, and I understood that there was an office shortage because of resignations. There were many, many other things that were occurring in our, that are occurring in our police department right now. There's possibly other resignations that will be coming in our department because of interdepartmental issues in your department chief. And so these things were not created by this administration. They were created by the past administrations handling other finances. And so with this situation that we have with the mall that I mentioned earlier, is putting a huge strain on our budget. And I wanted to make sure that the new incoming council members and myself were able to evaluate, analyze, and be able to review the budget, because these hard decisions that we're going to have to be making may be positions we're not able to fulfill and keep in order to save our budget from being stressed so much. And so I wanted the opportunity to be able to have this new council come in, to be able to review and determine what positions we are going to fill, instead of just filling them in, in this interim between the time that we were elected to the present time, to where we took office. And I did suggest to Mr. Peralas that he hold back on any hiring for the city, where a hire and freeze. He responded back that he felt that there might be the officers being tired on duty, that they're running 12-hour shifts. I did a little study on my own and was monitoring the activity of the police department, and pretty much a lot of the times that we see the police officers here, they're at the dispatch office, pretty much. We documented it on film and were able to determine who was going in and out, how many hours they were spending out. And to me, it felt like, okay, the officers are not really out there patrolling as often as they should be. And so I thought that perhaps we would wait on this, and we will be able to take action as a council later and determine and see this. Again, this is not anti-police. This is strictly business trying to make sure we maintain and control of our budget. It's not personal. It doesn't have anything to do with that. It has to do with our money situation. And if you really look at our situation of our budget, it is stressed very much right now. And with this new collective bargaining agreement that we have, it's going to be even more stressed. So we're wanting to err on the side of caution and be able to get a hold of these numbers and determine where these hard decisions and where basically the cutting of the fat will have to take place in order for us to get a hold of this budget. This is what the citizens voted us in for. This is what they want, and so we're going to be taking pretty quick decisive action on that. And again, I want to emphasize, it's not personal. This is strictly a business decision that we have to make in order for the citizens to have the core delivery services that we need to have. And we can enhance those services once we get our budget under control. But it's almost the same example of, we're going to spend $5 million over at the mall on the possibility that we're going to get new business that comes in, and then it doesn't come in, and guess what? Our general operating budget has to cover those expenses, which what we're doing right now, and wasn't expected of. But it should have been proactively thought about. And in addition to the $500,000 loss of revenue that we're having on the red light cameras come this Friday, is going to be another hit that we take. That on top of the, of the $400,000 on the mall is a $900,000 hit. And then we have our sales tax through the crime control that we'll be looking at also that just got approved by this past council, and that is sales tax money that's funding that. Again, you're planning on, and this is not logical, you're planning on the future of sales tax. What if that sales tax doesn't come in and consistently historically continue to produce? How are you going to meet the expectation of that expenditure of the full amount of almost a million dollars, or at a million dollars, that you're spending that full amount of expected income revenue with leaving yourself no backup whatsoever?
Sorry, mayor, I don't, I mean to interrupt.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't, I, I mean to interrupt. Um, if, so for the department reports and Q and A, it's really just a chance for the presentation of information from each department. And then if y'all have questions, specific questions, um, if there's something you'd want to discuss, um, we can definitely-
Yeah, and those are the things I wanted to discuss and bring out. It was important to, to make sure I cover those things because it's so complicated that the average citizen doesn't really know what's going on. And it can be conveyed very easily that we're anti-police and we're not.
And, and, and if I, if I may, being that we're, we're talking about the citizens and educating the citizens, I'd like to make sure that the citizens also understand that we're under chapter 25 of the local government code that we are a city that's managed and operated through the city manager and the council. The mayor is the leading person for it. The votes come from that of the council. So definitely we'll have to work together and make changes along the way that we, all of us together as a council move, move forward.
That is-
So the decisions that have been made have not been made by one person, but have been made by a council. And, and I look forward to, to working with everybody. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the police department report?
Yeah, that's it pretty much. Go ahead, chief.
I just like to address something you had said that there was possibly future resignations. I'm not aware of those, so if you have some time, I would love to meet with you. Uh, and on the second, by officers being here at the department and you monitoring that, that's something we've dealt with before and, and past councils. Um, and just so everyone knows that officers need to come back here to actually write the reports. So there's gonna be a, a certain amount of time that they'll have to be back here at the PD. We don't have that capability. We tried to do that with Bear County. Of course, it all revolves around money where they can actually write the reports and be in the field, but, um, everything is generated in the council packet. And, um, I think we've done a pretty good job as far as briefing y'all, as far as what y'all want in the council packet. So if there's anything that you want to add on there, and, uh, just let me know, uh, when we have this meeting. I would love to meet with you, uh, to find out that additional information. Uh, so just let me know when you're available.
Fine. That'd be great. Um, and just to add in, uh, I do have that information I can share with you so I can show you when they're doing their reports that you speak of, that where they're, where they're at exactly when they're doing their reports. And so, and again, to clarify with you, Councilman Lysia, uh, just to remind you that the mayor is the chief executive officer under the local government code. And he can oversee and supervise all of the municipal officers of the city. Now, the council makes the final decision.
With the council, uh, the council approving that directive.
Okay, I just want to throw that in there so you understand.
I'd like to call for orders of the day.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? I mean, we got, um, the other, uh, presentation by the fire department. Are you done, chief? You finished with yours? Thank you. We have the fire department?
Yeah. I'll speak for the fire chief. Uh, they currently, uh, if you've seen the report, unless you have any other questions, the only other thing is that they're starting their, uh, remodeling or they're painting the inside of the building. Uh, so if you have a chance, and if you haven't had a chance, you know, come by, they just recently remodeled the, uh, their kitchen. And, uh, they, they purchased some new equipment that, uh, that was direly needed by the department. So unless you have any other questions, yeah.
Any other questions? No other questions for the fire department, community development?
Unless there's any other questions on my report, uh, I have no further comment.
Okay, no other comments on the community development, nothing to report?
Uh, we're, we're on community development. Where are we on the hiring of the code compliance officer?
The code compliance officer, uh, part-time has been hired and will start June 3rd.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, well, the person will start June 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything from the economic development and public affairs?
What I would like to add, uh, before anyone has any questions is that next month, a lease of 4B 61 by Spirit Halloween will be brought to council for consideration as it's been in the last three years.
Anything to report on the mall activity, anything to report on, um, businesses or anything?
No, sir.
Anything on the public affairs side?
No, sir. All in the report unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, just, just on the, on the public affairs, last, last month I brought up a, uh, issue with the, uh, voting at the, uh, mall. I'd like to extend my gratitude to, to staff for reaching out within, by 10 o'clock the next morning, I had already received an email of trans, uh, transactions that were happening with the elections office. So thank you very much for following up on that.
Okay, anything else? Councilman Burton?
Uh, the hot fund says, uh, there was a, reflected a 15% decrease. And, I mean, we've only got one hotel here now. What, what, what say you? What say you?
I'm not sure I understand the question you're asking, Councilman.
If we've got a 15% de- decrease from the same time last year, there's only one hotel. Why, why the, the big de- decrease?
Well, the hotel has not offered any explanation for that. The, uh, I recently questioned the general manager because I had noticed in a comparative study that Spring Hill Suites rates were higher than the Marriott across the highway, which I found a little unusual considering the two different types of properties they are. And he said that that was, they were able to charge higher rates, their opportunity cost because their occupancy is high. There is no explanation at this time for the drop in hot revenue.
Okay. Do you, do you still think it's worth, uh, 1,200 bucks? For the, the, um, Texas travel? One hotel?
Texas travel, what exactly are you referring to? Tour Texas?
Tour Texas, I guess.
Well, the, the hotel occupancy tax is required to be used to promote the destination. So we have to spend some of that tax money to promote the destination through the most reasonable means. And Tour Texas is one of those, as is the San Antonio Visitors Guide, Visit San Antonio, and the Texas State Travel Guide. Because the, the law, the tax code requires that you use hot funds to promote. That's one of the five uses.
Is, is hot funds used for the Jazz Festival?
Yes, because it attracts visitors and promotes the destination.
I, I, I kind of disagree with you there, but-
It's certainly the city's prerogative to review that and make a determination.
I, I would like, I would like to see a, um, to help with our, our, our budget here, a temporary postponement or some revamping where we get a, I, I've, I've been to the Jazz Festival. I love the Jazz Festival. But I don't see an ROI. I see no return on investment. You, you might, you might comment. I can already picture you commenting.
No, no, I, I am not going to disagree with you. I think there's a lot that can be questioned about that. Actually, I agree with you.
Why don't we put it on the item for agenda for discussion in the next council meeting? And then that way you can take action on it, being that it's just discussion now. And-
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Any other input from any council members?
On, on, on that note, I'd like to, if that can be formed up into a committee and brought resolution to the council so we don't spend a whole lot of time listening to discussion. If they, if they could work something out before we have to have a long-
I wouldn't recommend a committee. I would say just get right to the meat of it and, and then vote on it.
Okay, I'm just doing it for the sake of time. Thank you.
Yeah, it'd take too much time.
Let's stop the committee, go into another committee, go into another committee to draw up an ordinance to go to another month. And if we're gonna do something about it, get it done.
One, one thing I would like to point out though, gentlemen, relative to the Jazz Festival is the contracts for this year's event have been signed already.
Okay.
They are typically done prior to this moment in time, but those are, we are committed to that at this point.
That's right. Yeah. Okay, and then closing, I just want to clarify uh, for the general public and because I don't want any misunderstanding on a comment that was made by Councilman Lysia. Under section 22.042, the powers and duties of mayor. The mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality. The mayor should all times actively-
Mayor, I, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt again, again, this is, I think, out of the bounds of this agenda.
I know, but he commented and he made some comments that were not really true. And so I want to make sure that it's clarified and closed with that. So the mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality. The mayor should all times actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of the municipality are properly carried out. The mayor shall perform the duties and exercise the powers prescribed by the governing body of the municipality. The mayor shall inspect the conduct of each subordinate municipal officer and shall cause any negligence or carelessness or other violation of duty to be prosecuted and punished. The mayor shall give the governing body an information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure that relates to improving the finances, police, health, security, cleanliness, comfort, ornament, and good government of the municipality. And in the event of a riot on lawful assembly, to preserve the peace and good order of the municipality. So it's just pretty clear and that's, we'll just close with that.
Thank, thank you and Mr., Mr. Attorney, and just so, so we stay on the same page. That is very true what it states on chapter 22. Chapter 25 defines the operation of a city run by a manager. Thank you, and we'll close on that. At least I will.
Okay, thank you for your input. So if there's any other, uh, input or, or any more comments to be made relation to number seven, we'll close this, uh, particular, um, report and Q and A. So the next item is announcement, comments, and requests. Any announcement, comments by the mayor or any council members? Do we have any council members that have any comments?
Yes. Yes, if I may, uh, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
General Rodriguez and the council members, Jack Burton and David Sellers. Looking forward to having a good working relationship and, uh, improvements for our community. Another announcement is FYI for all supervisors. I have noticed for a while that a couple of employees stay working after hours. Even on Fridays when everybody, everyone else leaves early. Sometimes I drive by the Justice Center as late as 7:00 PM and I see that our city administrator, Delia, and our finance director, Lisa, are still at the office. Sometimes I call Delia and tell her, go home, or I'll come with a pail of hot water to get you guys out of the office. And I've noticed Officer Smitty works late too. He does the same thing. Um, I think this is just a good note for supervisors to keep in mind and recognize these employees with either an award certificate of appreciation or at least recognition in their performance evaluation. Thank you.
Any other comments from, um,
Del, you just got a promotion.
You, you may say it's a demotion.
And I'll, I'll just, I'll just summarize on a, uh, code, code compliance meeting. We did have it last Thursday on the, uh, 16th, I believe. And we just summarized, uh, some of the areas that we're having deficiencies in.
Okay, any other comments from, uh? Okay, we move to number nine, announcements by the city administrator.
Got a couple of things. Uh, we received notice from, uh, Republic Services that, uh, they want to entertain a, uh, the option years, which happened in, in August. My recommendation to council because I, I, they submitted the, uh, the rate increases for, uh, come August. And my recommendation is that we consider moving forward with an RFP for services. I, uh, if you all are in concurrence, then I will move forward with putting an RFP together to get services, uh, to get a new company in, uh, and, and hopefully replace what we have. So if that's okay, then I'll, I'll just move forward with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
The other thing is just to, just to remember that, uh, next Monday, we're having the meeting today because next Monday's a holiday. So we will, we'll have, the offices will be closed and I promise that Dela will not be here. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so we'll move on to item number 10. Agenda item request by the mayor or council members to be placed on future city council agendas.
I have three that were mentioned in the meeting. The Jazz Festival, the storage container, and the outside burning.
Okay, so we want to put the Jazz Festival on for discussion. Is there any kind of language in there for the Jazz Fest? Be discussed, just the approval of it or what is it?
Be used to the hot tax, promoting the Jazz Fest, or if y'all want to make it more general and just discuss use of the hot tax period.
Okay.
You can do that.
And how much we will be allocating for it and whatever it may be, right?
Be used, we can give you a full briefing and that would be a discussion.
We all are pretty aware of it.
An action item.
Unless there's some specific action you want on the agenda, it would just be a discussion to bring out to speed on what it's been used for, how much it is, uh, whatever other information. And then at that point, if you want to say, let's do something about it.
Right, we can go ahead and move for that.
Yeah.
The others discussion, Ms. Sanchez is what?
The storage container, scowl home, and, uh, outside burning.
All right, and what's the third one?
The Jazz Fest.
Okay. The, any other, uh, any other council members want to place an item on the agenda?
I would like to see, uh, I, I kind of campaigned on this and, and I'd like to see us put a link on our homepage and stream the entire council meeting.
As an agenda item?
Yeah. You want it as an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, here, you're requesting it to be placed as an agenda item at the next council meeting. Okay, anything else?
For discussion, that's for discussion.
For discussion and action or just discussion?
Discussion and action.
Okay, discussion and action, Delia, for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Any other things? Mr. Burton? Or Councilman Burton?
I'm, I'm trying to think, uh, at, at some point, I would, I would, just discussion, I would like to see a, some type of signage. And I, I, I pushed for this when I was on council many moons ago. Uh, of some type of signage, maybe to sit on top of the balcony sites justice sign that would council meeting tonight, council meeting tomorrow. Gilbert Peralas' birthday, you know, happy birthday, Gilbert.
Just, Delia working late overtime.
Delia, go home. Uh, yeah, just something to-
No.
And, and have, it'd be facing Hillcrest and, uh, gentlemen. And that, that way the people know when we have council meetings and stuff, because you know, people have lives too and they forget. And just to remind people and, uh, serve as, you know, community reminders. Coming up, uh, National Night Out. Just stuff of that nature.
Okay, anything else, Councilman Burton? And we can come back to you.
If, if there are, yeah, if there is, there is a process between meetings. If y'all aren't ready to think of it right this second. This is just an opportunity where usually during a meeting, there's at least one or two things where everyone's like, oh yeah, let's talk about that. That's what this is for, but-
Go ahead, Councilman Tyler.
Yes, there's a lot of things on the agenda right now and a lot of things I want to bring forward to. The first point is the tree trimming at the park. It's way out of control. Uh, it's budget permits. I'd like to get the trees trimmed at the park.
Okay, anything else, Councilman?
Not at this time.
I did remember what I, what I wanted to say, if you don't mind me, one last thing. I've, I've mentioned this with, uh, the chief, John Harum, uh, to engage with an insurance company, i.e. maybe USAA or, uh, a Target. And let's get some solar powered floodlights down on those original light posts down there to light that park up so that the officers can see into the park. You don't have to spend any money on electricity. It's, it's, it's just makes, makes sense.
You want it for discussion or you want to have, um, discussion and action? Okay, so just discussion only, um, Mrs. Sanchez? Councilman?
Yes, just to like to fo- follow up on the o- opening comments and the, uh, recognition of, of Mayor De Leon for her services. I'd like for us to consider doing a, a resolution in naming her meremeritus for the time she served with the city and the, the services she provided to us.
Chief, what was that?
But I'd like to put that in, in a, a resolution for recognition.
Okay. All right, and just, you want action on it to have a- All right, and just, you want action on it to have a resolution drawn up, okay? So Councilman LaSaya. Resolution. It's funny, one time we were in a council meeting and um. She asked me why I use ma- mayor emeritus in my title. Uh, back when I was mayor. And yeah, and at that time, there actually is an organization, an association, Emeritus for Mayors that was created. So that would be nice, yeah. Um, anything else?
That that's it.
Okay, uh, Councilman Science, anything, Councilman Valverde?
No, sir.
Okay, there are a couple of things that I do want to put on right away. I want to discuss the limit on three minutes for people to speak. I would like to discuss about the elimination of that particular rule. And we should have that the citizens can come up and speak up. For a reasonable amount of time, but three minutes, I think, is very restrictive to the public. And I think that we need to change that, so I'd like to put it for discussion and action. It should be something very simple that we can discuss. And you give the people more of a voice. Whether it be they want to scream in our ear and tell us that they don't like us for what we're doing. Or they can just tell us how wonderful we're doing. Doesn't make a difference, but it gives them the opportunity to have a voice. And not just three minutes to be able to present their their items, give them enough time to talk. And as long as it's not insulting, demeaning type of activity. Then I think it would be acceptable for us to give the opportunity for the public. To have a better opportunity to address their government. And their representatives on the council and as mayor. The second thing that I'd like to place on there is I want to discuss this color wheel that we have. And I want to place that on the agenda for discussion. The, this color wheel that we have is a wheel that was. Uh, invested in by the city to tell people how they can paint their homes and their businesses. And so I want to discuss that as well and take a look at it as possibly eliminating that from our uh, books. Because I think that's very unfair to the business community as well as the home community. A person should have a right to be able to paint their home in whatever color they want, same thing with businesses. And so I'd like to discuss that as well. Anybody else have any other discussions that they'd like to discuss? Okay. So let's amend his to include bathrooms and trees, discussion of that. And then more importantly, I would like to set aside some time to discuss. These issues that I discussed about these serious challenges that we're facing. I think we should have a workshop set up for us soon, I mean, very soon. That we all sit down together so that we can do what. Councilman Valverde has suggested that we can come to meetings of the minds. As to our differences on what we're trying to achieve for the citizens of Alconis Heights. Involving police protection, the court delivery services. And also issues pertaining to any other things that are in relation to our working relationship together. But definitely the budget needs to be looked at immediately. And uh, Mr. Peralis and I have had a couple of discussions about it. He does have some concerns as well as I do. He has some ideas as well as I do and how to attack it. And what uh, some suggestions that he wants to make to us, correct? That you had? And so he has some cost-saving ideas, and I think that if we can all get together. In a room with a workshop. Listen to his suggestions, we throw some suggestions out there and see if we can work it out. Done with the best solution for our community. So if we can do that, set up a time, I'll try to give you a date and time which would be.
Okay.
Good, and we'll see if everybody's schedule can work for that. And maybe we might have two work sessions, but at least one for now. To immediately attack the pressing issues that we have on the financial burdens that we're facing. And I think that would be all, pretty much, on my part, for now. Great. So um. We will now move into executive session. On the executive session, for everybody's knowledge, it's a session that is conducted behind closed doors. The public is not privy to it other than what is stated here, so discussion pursuant to five five one. Dot oh seven two deliberation about real property regarding two oh one and two oh three Alt Gil Allen Avenue. That's the property that's located near the old uh, City Hall. So I would respectfully and politely ask the public to um, exit the room, excuse me. And and the time is right now, seven. Twenty-five PM.
Take recess.
And we are now.
Take a recess, real quick recess.
Okay, and then we're going to take a small reset.
You don't need.
Okay, we can go ahead and start, the meeting is now in open session from executive session, the time is seven forty-six PM. Okay, now we may uh, discuss items in the executive session and reconvening into this open session. And it has been under the direction of the city administrator. That we move forward with the offers from party number one. And to start any um, engagement of contracting um, on the buyer and seller.
I move to make a motion that we choose. Uh, option one with with the stipulation that he's not to. Is it to rent? Is that what we came up with?
Okay. Uh, Councilman Burton has made a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
I second.
Councilman Sellers has seconded that motion, now do we have any other further discussion?
Yes, sir, how about the stipulation for not being able to use that small building as a storage?
Not being able to use that building, what?
The small building that's.
The storage building, until it's decision to be made, what will be done with it?
It it has to be torn down.
Okay, so that mandatorily torn down.
Yeah.
Need to, do I need to remake my my motion?
Yes.
I move to make a motion that we choose option one with the stipulation of non-rental. And non-storage, not a, not a storage building.
Tearing it down.
Tearing it down.
Your microphone's off, David. Your your microphone is off, David.
I second that motion, too.
Okay, and that's going to be with um. With stipulation of a non-rental and then the mandatory tearing down of that building that's next to the old City Hall. No storage in it, okay, so not tearing it down.
Tearing tearing down, but. Uh. Uh, non-storage, uh. If we, if the, that's that's up to the owner whether he tears it down, correct?
Well, your motion was to tear it down.
Well.
Correct, what David asked, and then you added it to it.
So clarify, isn't it's non-rental and tearing down, or do you want it non-storage? Which one?
I'm, I moved to make a motion that. We choose option one. Non-rental of property. And if the owner so desires to keep the building, it's not to be used as a storage shed. Is that better?
Okay.
We would need a second on that motion now.
Okay, so we need a second to Mr. Burton's motion. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilman Science has seconded the motion. Now, do we have any further discussion on it? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so let's go ahead and make the roll call, Councilman Burton?
So Johnny, you only need to do one or the other, you don't have to do the voice vote.
Okay, because I thought earlier you meant.
No, no, it's it's one or the other.
Okay, so then we're fine, we're fine, passed by unanimous decision. Okay. All right, and that should conclude our meeting, let's go in council may act in open session, we've done that, so now the adjournment is at seven fifty. And uh, we have now concluded the council meeting.
Did you know that fifteen years.